Got to have well water, and we've got to have a lot of well water. We should be up around 10,000 gallon per minute, which is the reason for the two Hawthorne wells. We can't produce the water that we need to get out to the residents. And if we would go, for those that comply with what I believe to be the rule, two days a week, and find out that it's not two days a week, Katy bar the door. The water will be gone before eight in the morning. We got a real problem, because they'll turn them on and they'll water seven days a week.
I'll get in touch with Lee County Utilities tomorrow and ask them.
I'd like to answer that, to answer his questions.
And the Water Management District would have an opinion on what definition of reclaimed water unlimited use is also.
I think we need a, he's brought it up twice, and I think we need an answer to this issue.
Mr. Craft, property and cash-to-fee insurance for you.
All right, we are, what?
Boring.
Yeah, kind of more disinformation, I mean, we're up for renewal, renewals every year. I couldn't find history, but it looks like we've been with Florida League for as long as I can even go back.
But they still have it.
Yeah, and so basically, is what we did, Chris had started working with them last year, trying to get quotes just from other people, just to see if there were better options of coverage or better cost. So we got two additional quotes from two other agencies, as well as our renewal with Florida League. And then, just because, as boring as it is, it's hundreds of pages each one of the proposals, we had a outside consultant agency who specializes in risk management, basically go through and look at all these and see if we're missing on anything, if it's worth paying that extra premium for something with the storms, things like that. Basically, he came back and said, if you're not unhappy with them, there's no point to.
Question. I brought this up about four or five years ago, when we were into an issue, and got nowhere with the district manager at that time, because I don't know what his problem was. But two issues that, in my discussions with people in Orlando on the Florida League. Issue one is, do they know we have ownership of roads in this community? And the liability associated with roads, because at the time, they didn't know we owned roads. And the second issue is, do they know we own 500 acres of ponds? And are we covered on those ponds? And the reason I bring that up, is when I was at the club and on the board of the club, our insurance company over there went bananas when they heard we owned ponds. And that's why we gave them to the CDD. They wanted signs every 200 feet warning of no swimming in gators. That would have looked like a drive-in theater on the back of every yard. I mean, it's insane.
Right.
My question is, does our insurance company know, I'd rather know it now than later, that we have roads, we own roads, and we own ponds? And are we covered on that? Because I'd sure as hate to have an accident, and we get sued and then find out, you own roads?
We own fewer roads.
Well, I was gonna say.
We own fewer roads than when you turn the block over.
I don't have a definitive answer, but I do know they just defended us on that case, and we were being sued over the pothole or whatever, so.
But just find out the answer, just so that we know that we're covered if somebody has a wreck on one of our roads.
It gets eaten by an alligator.
Or gets eaten by an alligator.
Oh, you live in Florida, there's alligators?
Only the New Jersey people have a problem with that.
So are you looking for a motion from us to go ahead, or is this just information?
Just kind of information, I don't, I don't think you guys, this hasn't been brought to the board every year. That's pretty normal, correct?
No, but I just thought I'd ask if you wanted us to approve it.
So is it approved actually?
Why don't we just motion it as approved and get on with it?
That sounds good to me.
I'll motion it. Let me approve it. Is your table set to do it?
Yep, this is the Florida League of Cities Renewal.
Florida State.
All in favor, or any opposed?
Maybe.
Yeah, we're just gonna do it.
It's very, I think the next thing might be.
Yeah, the mass notification.
Okay, so this is a meeting a few weeks ago, I can't recall, I feel if one. I know you guys were discussing some type of notification system to reach out to the residents and things like that. And I just remember you guys talking about, and I overheard Leslie was already working with this Code Red about giving a notification system, they wanted one, Kenny and Leslie, the foil notices. It's just, you know, tough for them to go out and they hang the door tag and things like this. I mean, he can speak more of that, but if it's something you guys are interested in, it absolutely can be used as that, it would be a text notification system. It even includes an app where people could opt into login, view alerts, notifications, and it's something that can even be used as if we want to do some type of public reach-out thing of, hey, Griffin is closed for the next two weeks, just a reminder, or, you know, simple things, hey, the pool's gonna be closed for the holiday, or, and it's all, I got more information on it. This, this we got right in time for the board book, and that's why it's in here, but like the smart notice, when we had our, our meeting with them yesterday in the demo, he basically said they're phasing that one out. So the Code Red is kind of their go-to for like cities and municipalities and things like that. It's all unlimited, I know in the proposal, and I asked about it, it said like 12,000 minutes. That's a, there's so many options, you can have an operator call and leave a message on a phone, and I'm not sure the minutes come into account, things like that, but it's all unlimited texting. The people have to opt into it. You can go down to, literally, they have GIS software, and you can say, these seven people are affected, and draw a circle around those seven homes and send out a special alert.
Is this just the ADA compliant?
Good.
It is a very good question. Probably will, but, yeah, I mean, it's, it's used by almost all cities, this OnSol company that does it, it's a very large company.
And you can use it for any type of notifications, it's not just.
Unlimited, it's not just emergency. And that's 4,000, it's 4,500 a year based on our size.
Talking about Code Red, right?
Code Red, yeah.
We had talked about the app, is the app included?
App is included. Now, I know the app that you were talking about was more things like for Gateway and things like that, and it's not gonna be anything like that, it would be just going on to like view notifications and things like that, past notifications, history of them. There's even things you can do, like responding to some of the texts, and it doesn't, I don't even think the guy could cover all the time that we had with it.
There could, could there be a special app just for Gateway?
For this, no, I mean, now this would be just for the Gateway area.
Right.
Now, also, Lee County uses Code Red. So as a Gateway resident, if you sign up for it, you're gonna have access to both the notifications from Lee County and Gateway.
So basically, you get the app, and you basically register or identify where you want your notifications to come from.
And, and you don't even, you don't have to get the app as well. Like it, this will shoot text, so if people don't want to download an app or anything, they have the option, but this is a notification.
Or a silver alert.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, my question on this was, are, because of public record requests for information are, is this something that the phone numbers of all the residents will be protected? Or is someone going to be able to do a public records request and get all that information?
Well, the thing, we already have that information anyway, within all the billing software, so really, we'd be open to that same kind of deal now. And a phone number is a public records request, I mean, I, maybe you may know more about, I don't know if that's something that's considered personal and protected, I mean, I know obviously, social security number, things like that, but.
I think I would have to look at the statute, but I don't remember any special protection for phone numbers.
But the addresses are.
Are what?
The addresses are supposed to.
Yeah. Are exempt?
I think they can't, they're not supposed to be.
No, that's.
We.
I thought they were, okay.
We do have customers that don't want to opt into our notification system because they don't want their emails out there.
Emails.
Yeah, a lot of people don't.
Emails for text.
All right.
And this, it works, they actually write a script with the billing software that you can have it sent like every day, it'll pull all the new information from the billing, so, and you can send it, when people get an alert, it can go to their email, any texts, it's pretty good.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And I bet you this is what our engineer's been waiting for, fifth amended engineer's report.
Good afternoon, so my name is Tyler Wainwright, I'm at Hets Tech, I'm your district engineer. So.
It sounded a little bit like you were at an AA meeting. Sorry, just kidding, just kidding.
That's what I did last weekend.
I had to give him a little bit of trouble because he wasn't smiling, he was just, he was very serious.
Well, I haven't been to an AA meeting, but.
You got time.
I've got plenty of time left, I guess, for that. So, this is the fifth amended engineer's report, it's not so much very different than the fourth amended engineer's report, except for there are two items yet to be requisitioned within this report that we have depreciated just due to the age of the asset at this point. I don't know, I wasn't sure what exactly needs to be done with this. I know it's on your agenda as an informational item, to be really honest with you, I don't know if it needs to be adopted by your board, or what the next action to be taken is. But if you have any questions on the report, I can definitely answer it for you. But what to do with it, I, I don't really know, to be real honest with you.
On it here.
Yes, sir.
I, usually, on a report like this, if there's any funds left at the end of the construction, it goes back to the FPO.
Yes, sir.
To prepay the bond, is that what's gonna happen in this case?
Well, you, you'd have two options. One option is exactly what you're saying, to refund the bondholders, or it can be spent on capital projects within the bond area. And I think the recommendation within this report is to do a little bit of both. There are some capital projects and there is some refunding, so it's a mixture.
Well, then I misread it, I thought that all of the expenditures were approved, and that would be the end of the fiscal, the bond council's getting tired of fiddling around with something that started in '03.
Let me read the very last sentence of the recommendation. Resulting in approximately $179,000 of excess funds, which can be used for eligible projects such as additional capital remedial work for district range infrastructure within the 2003 project areas, such as the addition of Aeration upon 13 driving range, or for the redemption of outstanding bonds pursuant to master trust indenture. So I, I guess my understanding of this is up to the board, how you want to inform them with that. You can do either or, so if your decision is to refund it, do that.
Who makes the decision? Us?
I would suppose the board does, I guess.
I'd like to talk to Pete with Pelican before.
That's what I'd like to do.
See what they have on.
Because I'd heard that pond 13 was around, I would say $48,000.
Yes, sir, I don't, I don't think it's the whole amount. My understanding, and I could mistake it on this, my understanding was, there was a, an amount that was remaining that was going to be used for capital projects within the bond area, but it was not the full amount, and the remaining would be returned.
I agree with Bill, I'd like to hear from Dr. Peters.
Tony did ask me to tell you that he recommends that you approve the engineer's report.
Motion to approve the engineer's report.
It's just the report.
It's just the report, the action, the action is independent of the approval of the board.
He's been getting pressured from the bond council all been.
Yeah, all been.
Is that something?
Fifteen, fifteen years.
Two of them died, since it was done.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, end of discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Margaret, can I ask one question? Pelican's come up, and I'm taking notes for the Pelican Reserve, for the P-PAC. Was that, is this something that we should be involved with, or is that something, Bill, that somebody else is involved with?
Say it again, is it something, what?
Is that something that P-PAC would be involved with?
Oh, yeah, big time.
Okay, so, I need to make good notes on that, I'll have to talk to you later. I missed half the conversation today.
You were thinking you didn't mean to be involved.
What are the P-PAC's recommendation on what to do with the excess funds?
Tonight.
Before you got an answer, I'll take it.
So whether they, whether they, some of the money's rolling to distant capital, or, and, and the, and the difference be refunded, or all refunded, so.
Or accommodation.
Yeah.
That brings us to supervisor comments, Mrs. Flaherty, I'll start with you this time.
Okay, I do have a few, okay. The fishing contest, where are we at the fishing contest? I usually see that in September, some residents have asked me about it, and.
They just asked me at the pool, by.
Oh, wow.
I'll find out, you want to hold it?
I'll bring it back next, next, next time.
We were just discussing the staff, because we had about 12 people there last year, so I wasn't sure if it was worth the effort, but.
Well, that's, I think it's because it was canceled, and why I remember it was September, was because of the hurricane, they had to cancel it because of the hurricane, and then they had to cancel it again because of something else. So I think that was the problem, I'll just, I have more questions for you, so.
We'll resurrect the fishing tournament.
All right, thank you. My next question is, who is dumping, and where are they dumping from, near the pool?
That's the, they're coming out of the storm drains.
What storm drain?
One of the daily drains that they're working.
Do we have a permit, and are they paying to dump?
Well, it's a.
I mean, that is a designated area that, I don't know if it's a dumping area, so I was wondering if we needed a permit, and if people are paying to dump there?
Well, it's a drying area.
Okay, shouldn't they be taking this, whatever you want to call it? Seach, you know, stuff, whatever, shouldn't they be taking it to some dumping grounds?
Yeah, once it, once it dries out, then we'll probably use it on the Florida Power right away as a soil amendment.
Okay, because I'm, I'm just thinking that, you know, come future this, is it going to cause some problems with the soil? That's, you know.
We're, we're testing this, testing the material right now to verify what's in it, but we, we start hauling that stuff off, a $250,000 project's gonna be cost $400,000. So we want to, we want to facilitate a dump site here as close as possible to the work.
And the county does the same thing, they have drying beds in different areas, and their public works department takes it out, puts it on the side of the road, and just put it on the side.
Well, like you said.
And we isolate it.
If we decide to build, I don't want to have any contamination of anything from it. That's my concern.
That's why they're testing it.
I have to have a check on it.
Yeah.
Okay, and when is the light pole being fixed near the FPO, using it across from the Pelican Reserve assets?
I'll check on that, I mean, it's on the ground.
The one that's laying on the ground, yeah.
I know, I know they ordered the pole.
It just seems to be a long time to put up a pole. Actually, that's all I know.
I have nothing.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I got a couple things. So, we had talked at one of our board advances about publication or a newsletter. Chris, do you know if we, I thought we even put dollars in the budget at one point, for print or some type of resident publication and newsletter, I think we were trying to shoot something for.
I think that was brought up, but I don't think we moved forward that.
No.
In fact, actually, my memory was that the board said they didn't want to do a newsletter like that. I could be mistaken, but you're right, and we haven't pursued it from a staff standpoint at all.
Well, I would, I would encourage us to go back and reconsider something, because one of the things that I still think we do a very poor job of is, is communication. And especially with, as much work as I think this board has done over the last two years, and probably from the last, the last year alone, that information's gotta be sent out to, to our residents. And also, as we're looking to, coming to this new year, things that we have planned for this year, I think it would be very important for us to be able to update residents on what our stormwater thing plan's gonna be, what's going on at the pool, what, you know, all these different things. Communication is absolutely key, and unfortunately, we don't have a good communication delivery mechanism. So that's something I think we should continue to look into.
And I thought we talked about doing a one or, you know, double-sided page in with the billings.
Yeah, I think we, we talked about a couple different things, and maybe we didn't land on any concrete, but maybe at our next workshop, maybe we can.
Because I thought since, since everybody gets a bill.
That'd be fantastic.
That there would be a great place to put it, and I think that at one time, a long time ago, that's actually when we used to get updates and newsletters, not, maybe not with every bill, but we would get little flyers in with our bill. I always read them, I don't know how many other people did, but I always did.
So just something that I did think we need to continue to have conversation about, what our communication strategy is.
It's not intended to be funny, but all of that stuff may have to be ADA compliant, just to be careful.
Well, I think, well, I think some of the, the fact that we were gonna use our website as a central point of contact, but a lot of people just don't visit the website. And our social media, from a Facebook perspective or whatever, we don't really update that all the time, and I know Kathleen put some stuff into the paper, so I think we need to stay in more holistic strategy, because it's a PR play too. I mean, if, if we're not communicating and educating the residents, or even updating on what we're doing, then we can't alter perception of actually the job that we are doing. And I think we're doing some really great things.
Just so you know, Mr. Banks, I want to interrupt.
Yep.
The article that I put in my style is also put up on the website.
Yeah, yeah, I do know that, so thanks. One of the things that I think we should continue to look at as, as we move forward, Chris, is just, you know, taking a page out of Pelican's operation manual, manual. They do a great job with their committees, and I don't think we'll, we'll be able to necessarily replicate what Pelican does, but I think, you know, even with a gentleman that's been here twice talking about irrigation, and maybe we need to look at standing up some small committees, things that are actionable, or work groups or something along those lines. And I know that Pelican with Bob and the ponds, I know that we probably do some correspondence with them, but I think if we could develop more of these, you know, committees or, you know, some type of structure, and they get us some more substantive experts in, within our community that we can bounce ideas back off, or have them do some less work in addition to staff, so, no, no comment on that, I just thought I would throw it out there, because I, I continue to look at Pelican and things that they've done over there, and they just have great success. Now, granted, they've got a lot of volunteerism in, in that community that we may not be able to actually replicate here, but it's just something I think we should continue to look at. We did talk about a survey, I think, if, if we're not sending a survey or getting some type of poll on the pulse of the community annually, we're doing ourselves a disservice, because if we're expecting people to come in and voice their opinion during these board meetings, that's not happening. We might get, you know, a fragment of participation here, but how are we really supposed to align residents' priorities with what we feel as a board and staff are our priorities? So we should be looking at, you know, putting some type of survey together, and that could be everything from holistic direction on priorities, or whether it's parks and rec, or water management, or whatever, but I think we need to get some type of pulse for the community. The other thing is, have we, where are we at with updating the permit criteria?
I don't think we've even started.
No. I thought there was something underway.
We were, we were going to, but we didn't have the, you know.
Okay, what do we need to do in order to, is that something that we should have put on our prioritization for this year? Is it, is it more staff resources than it is funding?
No, I think the issue is going through it and picking out as a result of the last year, issues that have come up to where the permit criteria manual is silent. And a lot of that had to do with, what was that, landscaping, monuments, streetlights, street signs, those type of things that the manual is silent on.
I think that would be a great opportunity for us to stand up maybe a new committee, and getting some people that are very knowledgeable about some of this stuff. I'm sure we could probably pull someone from Pelican, or even, I mean, Ed, you, you've got a lot of, a lot of history in this, and you could probably handpick a couple people to, to work along with staff, but that would be a good opportunity for us to get some work, because I think the longer we wait to update that permit criteria, we just continue to put ourselves in a position where it's just not optimal. You know, we can't use the excuse, well, we need to update the permit criteria if we continue to sit on it. So that's one item I think we need to, to move on. And the last thing I have is, just, I asked Chris, because I wasn't quite sure, but as we get closer to elections, we're gonna, I'm sure candidates, myself included, are gonna look to put up some campaign signs and things, things that nature, so I think we probably need to, Chris was gonna resurrect the policy on election signs, and I think we probably as a board need to define what our tolerance is gonna be for, you know, putting signs within the policy, working with the landscaping company or whoever, so they don't get taken down, because those things are expensive, as I'm sure a couple of us in the room are, are aware of. So I just want to make sure, before I put anything up, I want to know what our policy is, and, and what we, you know, what's tolerable and what's not.
Well, all these people who are outside of the four Rudd and the candidates, if you go over there by the church where I live, and there'll be 100 signs over there. I don't know who's, they're not coming and asking for permission, they're putting those signs wherever they damn well please.
And you, previously, for like the local election, even, even when we owned the roads and all the rights away, and it was our decision, just for election time, we said, you know, we were gonna allow.
30 days before, seven days after.
Exactly, we, we were lenient because it's such a local issue that, you know, people wanted to put campaigns on.
But the three primary roads for advertisement no longer are right ways.
Exactly, that's what I wanted to bring out.
I think we'd have a problem with the county on that, I don't know if we want to touch that with a 10-foot pole.
I don't know, because even for like the governor and the senate, and the representatives of school board, like you said, they put, they've got signs up all over the place, and those are on, you know, Lee County property. And I think as long as they come down, was it, even for them, I think it's seven days after a campaign that you have to have your signs picked up.
I just didn't want to put anything down, but.
Gateway Greens approved putting the signs up 30 days and seven days coming down, and they cannot be on common right-of-way, they can only be on the.
That's private property, that's private property.
I'm sorry.
That's private property.
Yeah, you can be on private property, but it cannot be on the, the HOA's common property.
HOA's private, though, and they're talking about.
On the, on Gateway and Griffin.
Yeah, public property, right?
Yeah.
I think, what I would do is, I would call the supervisor of elections and say, you know, this is Lee County property, can we put election signs up?
Well, I, I asked Chris to dig up the policy, and let's maybe simplify it, and just have something available for those that ask.
A few years ago, we decided that we were going to close our eyes, ears, and nose and mouth, and let people put signs up where they wanted until the election, and after the election, they come down.
I just want to put something up and have landscapers pull it down, or.
I don't think manstries would do that.
Lee County.
If they're in the right-of-way, Lee County will pull them down.
Chairman person could.
Well, if Lee County pulls them out, there's not anything we can do, but we're not gonna pull them out, it's what we decided to use.
With the election signs, you think Lee County will pull them up? Because, I mean, they were all over the place, up and down the road.
They have a crew out there, and they're gonna pull them out.
Yeah, Cross Route 82 was Lee County, and they took them down.
Oh, on 82.
But now that John Gateway and Griffin, they got this situation.
Can I come up real quick? So, Jim bringing up Park, I just did research on the issue of political signage. Political signage is protected speech, just like political campaign talk is protected speech. The issue comes down to whether or not you're talking about signage on public property or inside of an HOA, for example, and HOA's private, so it's not, it's not, speech inside of HOA is not protected. Your HOA can say yes or no. But I believe, if you do the research, and I think contacting lead.vote is a great idea, they've told me, public property during the election cycle, 30 days, and seven days after, the sign's gotta come down. But that's what I've been told, but I think it'd be great if you all got official.
But for us, we should have it two years ago.
Thank you, Senator.
That's it for me.
Mr. Tinkle?
First, the.
I was hoping we'd actually finish at 5:15, which is on our agenda, can you talk fast?
Eight, eight and a half, some of this is critical. We had a phone call with our great consultant today, and what we came up with is trying to set a date, Chris, catch me on the dates, a resolution to Tony, so that we can approve that resolution at the second October meeting that would address the rate increases for water sewer and irrigation and the connection fees, with the thought that our. with the thought that our rate consultant would be here at the November first meeting to make a formal presentation to the board. And then, our rate consultant is of the opinion, and Tony's gotta confirm this, that it's a ninety day minimum period before you can enact these, which would put us into late January to have the rates go into effect, and the new connection fee to go into effect. So I think the big one is right now, is just getting the board knowledgeable of that, Chuck and Darrell need to get to everybody copies of the connection fee study and the rate study, so to take them, have knowledge of it before that meeting on the eighteenth. And then he'll be here on the first to present, he couldn't be here on the eighteenth, that's the problem.
So we can't wait till the first?
I'm sorry?
Can't we wait till the first to have it on the agenda, so that we have the presentation first, so we would understand it, and we'd be able to ask questions?
Because we're trying to get the time clock moving, that's the big problem, and.
Why, what's, what's, what's important about the time clock?
Money, we need the revenue.
What's two weeks?
Badly, as you'll see when you see the report, we need the money badly. We're hurting for money, that's important.
Mr. Schenaker?
Uh, we just, we discussed that, originally our plans were, some earlier discussions, that we'd wait till January to roll that out, you know, have February, March adoption. There is a, this is the quickest we could do it, but once you bring it out, you have to have that ninety day period before you have your public hearing and adopt the rates.
That's the problem.
So there's a ninety day lead time, once you roll it out at that first meeting, and, uh, bringing all this up, I said, well, we're gonna have to get Tony's review on it, that could take a few weeks too, so.
Yeah, our consultant doesn't prepare the resolutions, Tony's gonna have to prepare the resolution.
So, when Tony gets back, we can maybe have a conference call with him to discuss this, is that good?
Yep.
We, one of the, that, one of the Wednesday mornings after he gets back, we can have a conference call with him, that's planned.
And, and once you start, I mean, just roll that out, then you have ninety days till you can, again, have a public hearing and actually adopt them.
The, the next item that was discussed is, is that, uh, our rate consultant has not been employed, uh, to review our other fees. We have on the books right now, as I recall, six fees that we are supposed to be collecting, and for whatever reason, three of those fees we're ignoring. And have for God only knows how long.
Such as?
Uh, service fee, capacity fee, administrative fee, they're all in our rules, and they've never, to my knowledge, there's no amendment, board action, public hearing, these were just done by somebody's making a call, and right now, we had a discussion today, we don't know who did it. My, my guess is, it was our prior management company, or our current management company when they had the district management position. Uh, I don't get it, but it shouldn't be on the books, but some of those fees, before we just throw them out, in my opinion, we need to have our rate consultant look at them and tell us, are they something that are, that are meritorious, that we need to continue to collect? Or we truly drop them, and get them off our books?
Do we need a, a, a change order?
We need a, we need a change order to authorize Chris to go ahead and have him, have them do that study.
Can we just get a, get a quote to understand what, what that, that is?
Yeah, it makes, it makes perfect sense, he's gonna be doing it, let's do it.
Let's wrap it all up.
Yeah.
And the thing is, if, if we, uh, decide, because it hasn't been collected, we don't need it, and we adopt that new resolution, you get rid of the old one.
It's the same.
That makes sense.
Uh, next item, change in subject, hydraulic study, where are we at on getting the hydraulic study going? Have we got a proposal coming in on that?
Uh, there's a proposal coming in, and we should have it at the next board meeting, first.
Next one, I talked to Chris on this, is, uh, and this goes back to what Pelican Reserve is doing and has done. We need to have staff put together for us, our side of the, of the, what staff's vision is for this community and our sixty some ponds and wetlands relative to bathymetrics, GIS, and aeration, and more specifically, in our flowway, testing our water to find out, do we need to be dredging these ponds? The rule of thumb is twenty, twenty-five years, and you've not done any aeration, you've got a real good chance of needing to dredge ponds, and especially in our condition, dredge the flowway. That flowway, I have no idea of what's in it. It's scary to think of what's in it, because of all the copper we have dumped in it for years and years and years.
Excuse me, huh?
He, he may be, if he is, if he's in there with the copper, he might be dissolved, but I would like to have the staff start putting together, and if nothing else utilized, and somebody else said, what Pelican's doing is ahead of us, and they are way ahead of us. Let's create a vision for what we're going to do on stored water management inside this side of Gateway.
And then we could probably get someone from Pelican, from that pond group, to come and assist staff.
Bob, Bob, Bob Geppert, you just line him up, and he'll just spit it out, I mean, he's got all the stuff that they, that we need to be doing. Uh, the next one is, is that, uh, oh, uh, the audit issue, that's been deferred because Tony wasn't here. The, the issue on the audit companies, we're holding off on that.
The single audit issue.
Yes.
Next one is, and I just found out about this, has anybody seen the Gateway CDD rules? You don't know your one?
I have, but it's been a long time.
They need to be reexamined, we need to bring those rules out and talk about them, because one of the major changes was, is that we're now no longer under district management services. We need to have a, there is not even a discussion of the dis- district manager in our rules. So that, and a couple of other things, need to be looked at, those rules, I just got a copy of them, and I was flabbergasted at what was in there, those need to be looked at.
And it, it probably should be an ongoing process from staff to continue to look at all of our policies and procedures and, and update any language, and that's a great example.
Board members should have gotten a copy, when you get on the board, the first thing is the rules, I wasn't aware that we had twenty-eight pages of rules.
The rules is?
Yeah. So, uh, I think we need to be visiting that issue. The, uh, last one is the issue of, uh, this is somewhat of a campaign issue, and I did some research, and I don't wanna point any fingers or anything, but I wanna make clear that everybody understands, and if everybody would review the minutes of our five nineteen sixteen, May nineteen sixteen, twenty sixteen meeting. A lot of false impressions on this Lake Bank project, read those minutes, they clarify it all. The board was told by Tetra Tech in twenty sixteen that this was going to be a twenty point six million dollar project. It was the board who took the action to only goo a phase one at six million dollars. We are right online with every penny that they estimated of what the cost of the project were going to be as of May nineteenth, twenty sixteen, and there's a lot of people around here, thinking, in the community, thinking that this, this is out of hand, it's not, and we were warned, we were warned.
I, I, I am part, one of them, thinking it got out of hand.
But I think the, the numbers are, and the facts are, we were told it was going to be a twenty point six million dollar project, and that's the reason we went for a bond validation of twenty million dollars. That's everything I had minute here.
Okay, just, Mrs. Flaherty, go right ahead.
Can we have a workshop then about the, um, CDD rules? If, if you, sure?
If we're, that, that'd be a place to start.
That'd be a good, that makes perfect sense, we, we probably got the next month's workshop scheduled, but how about maybe the one.
Do we have a date, well, you don't have a, not Joe Disserbo workshop, but a.
No.
Board meeting.
Yeah.
You're not gonna go through that.
You're not gonna be.
You're talking, you're gonna.
What needs to happen is, I think, uh, staff needs to get a copy of that out to everybody to read and understand what it is, it's confusing. It looks like they were done in twenty twelve, and I even made the statement to Tony, and he hasn't responded back, maybe he was a little mad at the way I wrote it. But they referenced Collier County.
They referenced what?
Collier County. These things look like they were taken from another community. I think they need to really seriously be looked at, but most importantly, we're under a new management concept, and I think they need to be revised to reflect that with our new management scheme.
Then I suggest that maybe in January, we have a separate workshop on that, because I think at, at the end of November, we have the holidays, and, and prison hours.
That's gonna be.
But getting the, getting a copy of them out there.
Get them out to everybody, and then you start reading for yourself, I, I was flabbergasted when I read it.
Yeah, it would be nice to have a work group, to be able to kind of address that, because that, that can be a big can of worms.
It will be.
Okay, that meets five twenty-three, and we are adjourned.
Till twenty-five thirty, so.
Pretty good.